Good evening. Thank you very much for being here. Let's get the meeting rolling. I'd like to start with mayor's announcements. It's come to my attention that Eric Pedersen has resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And as a result, we have done a selection process. John Alexander has put his name forward, has been vetted by the staff, has been approached by me. I feel comfortable with Mr. Alexander, but it does need the advice and consent of the council. So as this is my recommendation, I would entertain a motion and, well, I guess I don't need to do a motion for advice and consent. So I would like to appoint John Alexander to the Planning and Zoning Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. John Alexander is appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we appreciate his willingness to serve in a public capacity. Moving on to citizen participation, I'd like to open it up for any person here wishing to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please step to the podium and you will be able to say your piece. Hello again. Welcome back, sir. How are you guys? Well, and yourself?
Well, my name again is Michael Lackaby. I live at 7052 West Farm Road 182. I've been in conversation with Mayor Russell, and those have been great conversations about the trail going from Republic, the city of Republic, to the museum. The reason I've come back is to just readdress it and keep it on the forefront of your guys' minds. The biggest concern that I've come up with, the reason I'm here tonight, is I'd like to not keep coming back to the city council meeting for just a little bit of minute with you, but for this to actually be addressed. And I do know if we vote for it, it's not going to be in our favor because there's like eighteen of us over, you know, a couple hundred acres, but then there's the city of Republic where a trail sounds really good to them and it doesn't affect them at all. So I don't know what the best way forward is on that. But another concern of mine that came up with it is if you, does anybody ride road bikes? Do you guys ride road bikes on city council at all? Nobody? So a road biker, if you know, I don't ride road bikes. They don't use trails. They use roads. And they love it. They live for it. That's why they ride across the country and not on trails. And so one of my concerns is that even if the trail goes in, it's not necessarily getting to be used for bikers. Maybe for recreation, you know, my family recreationally uses bikes, but that's also something to consider. That was one of the reasons that Andrew and his team had given. The other thing is, is if you're a road biker, a short distance from the museum to the city of Republic is not very attractive. It's not, that's not something that somebody with a road bike is really going to get all geared up and in their tight pants and stuff and, and ride, you know, into that short ride into Republic, and then the trail goes through the city of Republic. So it's not something they're, they're able to really enjoy in the context of what I know of what people have road bikes for. The other things that Mayor Russell and I have talked to is just timeframe. The building going up across from the high school is going to be a Republic builds building. I don't know why there isn't signage up for that, but I would like to see some signage up letting the city of Republic know that they're breaking ground. And from what I read on their website, they don't even have architectural plans for that yet, is what the website, I think, said. But ground is broken. And so I, I don't, I'm not saying that there's anything good or bad about that. I'm just saying that that seems to be the repeated behavior of just break ground, we'll figure it out. Just go get the engineer's drawings, we'll figure it out type of thing. And so I don't want that to become characteristic of the city of Republic and their leadership, whether I have a say or not. Somebody told me to ask about jurisdiction. We're in Green County outside of the city limits of Republic. And we do know that the city of Republic is coming that way. To be honest, I don't even have a problem with that. The city's growing like crazy, but I would just like to keep my land in the process of doing that. I've seen neighborhoods, we've got development going that way. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
And so the, the question I have tonight and the, the reason I came tonight was again to say that. And then the last thing I'll say is, I met the lady again that, that does the trails. And I don't mean this in any disrespect. I'm not, I'm not being rude or mean, but I'm a pastor. And I do know that preaching is not performing. And whenever you have like an agenda that you know people aren't going to buy into, there's like an almost inappropriate amount of convincing in a speech given. And so I'm not writing speeches. I'm just getting up here and asking you guys to continue to look further into what we're asking you for. More people from the neighborhood have, have asked to sign this. And I don't even know if it's going to do good to have everybody involved to sign a petition and say, please don't put a trail through our yard, so.
And I don't know yet either.
Okay.
And like I've said to you via message on Facebook, I'm still looking into it. And you know my plan. You understand where I'm coming from, I hope.
Yeah.
You know my timeframe. I paid Damon by the minute here. Our city attorney that's going to replace him is going to be paid on salary. So I'm waiting for the new city attorney to come in. We'll sit down. We'll talk.
Okay.
I will, I will touch base with you.
Okay. Yeah. And, and I believe that and I appreciate you guys' communication. I just, I'm probably going to be coming back to these things. Not as many people are here because we thought, you know, we had to come and just run you guys out of town last time, I guess, but the, I, I really don't want it to come to that. I really wanted to be able to, you know, have kind of a.
I appreciate that. You're welcome to come anytime. I just don't have all the information yet. So thank you for coming tonight.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address again. It's good to see you again.
Hi, this is Lisa Roller. I live at 6618 West Farm Road 182. And Michael's pretty much the head of everybody down the farm road that's got the petitions. We kind of just let him correspond back and forth with you guys, and he's kept us up to date on what's going on. Again, I'd just like to, to say that, you know, we don't want the bike park, our bike trail in, in front of our house. I mean, it's just, to me, it's not something that's going to be rewarding because we've seen maybe a handful of bicyclers down that road every single year. They're talking about putting in sidewalks over on Heinz Road. Well, you've already got it staked out for the sidewalks. Why not just put the bike trail in where you can walk on the bike trail, you can bicycle on the bike trail, you can skateboard. And on Heinz Road, that's where the park is. That's where all the children and the families live that are inside the city limits going outside city limits. Why not just put it in the next road over? Or better yet, let NICSa have the funding. I just, that's, I'm, I'm strong about, I just, I don't think it's fair for us to be able to, to encroach on our property another sixty foot to where I'm looking out my front door at a bike trail and people meandering on my property all the time. And what happens if one of our animals, they stop these kids on the bike and they go to pet one of my dogs and they get bit? Who's going to take care of that? You know, there's a lot of concerns that we have. It's just, I, I think it's, it's just not, it's not rewarding for us to give up our property for a bicycle trail that there's no bikes that come down that road hardly at all. And who's to say, once we give them an inch, that they don't come back in a year and say, oh, well, we need to make changes and we're going to take a little bit more of your property? We don't know that in the future. You guys don't know that. But that's all I had to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Good evening. Would you please state your name and your address?
Carrie Sanders, 6695 West Farm Road 186.
Thank you for coming, Carrie.
Our firm goes through to 182.
Okay.
So at that point, it's just pasture. And I was at a meet and greet, I'm guessing four or five years ago, when the bike trail was discussed and it was supposed to come through our pasture, not alongside the road, but meander through, come across and go through the timber over to ZZ. And, sorry, I'm pointing, but.
You're fine.
And so I thought it was a solved issue then when we wrote letters and things and nothing was ever brought back because, you know, it was going to go through the cattle and we would have to open and close more gates to feed the cattle. And I was surprised that the funding was still sitting in hold. And when we got the letter saying it was going to come across the vacant part. So my concern is, well, it was the night we had the meet and greet and I explained to a couple gentlemen here the danger of the crossing, the pedestrian crossing. But I think somebody said that they could move that. But when you turn, you come down the hill west, you go down the hill east, and where you turn onto 99, where the crosswalk would be is exactly where we just about got creamed on our tractors because we did hay on the north side of 182. And I was in front of him and I was turning left onto 99. And somebody went to pass him and then to pass me. And so he kind of, I don't know, moved over. And of course, I was in the tractor with no cab. So the guy did go into the ditch, but not enough to crash. So when you think about the safety, that's the first thing that comes to my mind. And also, when they said they wanted fifty-five feet from the center line onto the property, I know that's going to vary depending on the surveys and all that, but it does come into the pasture, the grazing, the, the hay production. And I just kind of thought this was a dead issue several years ago. And now here it is back. And, and we, we touch, we go clear to ZZ on 186. So we see a lot of the activity that comes to the park and, I guess, appreciates the park. And I have to agree with several. If you come out and see, just drive down 182 every now and then, all of you, you won't see a lot of, well, of course, there's no place to ride, but there won't, there isn't a lot of activity that I think would come out that far to access the park. And then I, I kind of pulled over on ZZ and looked at where that would come down, past their house, down, okay.
No, I don't want to catch your fishes out.
I, I started to look for a clock.
Yeah, it's right here in my hand.
Anyway, I had emailed you and I hope you got the email. And we invite all of you to take several trips up and down 182.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming in and speaking.
So our, our stress, Mayor Russell, comes from the fact that when we went to that Republican builds and Olson's meeting, they were very kind, again, this has been a great process, but we heard from their mouth, I can't remember, it was Andrew, the guy standing next to them, what is going in is just a matter of time. And so that was, that's where the energy's coming from is, okay, so we just like had no say in this matter.
So you know my plan. I think you're comfortable with my plan. I appreciate you being here. We've got some other things to cover tonight. I totally understand why you're here. I get that. We're going to move on unless there's anybody else that wants to speak about this issue. Come on up, sir. Let's, let's, can you give us a quick update about the lacrosse team, too?
Hey, we can do that.
Yeah, I'm just saying. We, we were up here talking about sports before. No. Well, you've got three minutes.
Bobby Derry, 101 North Madison. So our concerns are slightly different than the ones that are out of town.
Yes, sir.
And the fact that we have concerns with landowners outside of the city limits as well as inside the city limits may indicate that maybe there needs to be some more discussion about this. Okay? I know, for instance, my neighbor who has medical issues, one, just east of us, I'm sorry, west of us, that trail cuts his backyard smooth in half. I mean, it comes right, you take ten to twelve feet out of the middle of his backyard. And to me, that's just not right. I don't think that is a proper use of easement. I don't think it's a proper use of someone else's property. So, and again, I stress that I very much invested in, in Republic. And there's got to be a way that we can beat both the needs of the outdoor activities that Republic seems to want as well as, you know, meeting the needs of, of the property owners. There's got to be. Is it more expensive? Probably is. Everything comes with a price. But we paid a price when we bought the property. Second piece is that she hit it, this lady hit it right on the head. If that is a dangerous spot, that is in the bottom of, of a, of a, of a, of a little veil there, whatever you want to call it, it's blind on both sides. Speed limit's supposed to be forty-five out there. When's the last time you saw a police officer out there? Okay? It's not patrolled, okay? I sit on my deck, back deck and see kids, adults, trucks hit that, that city limit sides at sixty-five plus. Okay? We're now starting to see, and I don't know quite what the reason is, that we're starting to see some large truck traffic down there. So just this morning, semi going, you know, going, going right through there. So I'm not sure that's really a safe location to bring kids, bikes, dogs, people across to begin with. I'm very much like Michael. I, I hope I'm not here for my second hug.
The punch is coming next.
Okay, that's what I'm afraid of, okay? Is, is I just feel like there needs to be more discussion about this because it feels very much like it's a done deal. And that, that's not what the city's about. It's not what you guys want. It's not what you guys want.
Right.
I just feel like that, you know, we have some, we, we've asked some questions and I think we, we deserve some answers.
I agree. And that was a perfect three minutes. Well done.
Oh.
No, but.
I messed up somewhere.
You can't, you can't see this, but David's taking notes. I know Eric's taking, we're, we're taking notes. We're forming opinions. Nothing's going to happen tomorrow. I'm sorry, good or bad, hug or punch, but we're getting there. So I appreciate you keeping it at the top of the pile.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. You can't because you had your shot. Dang it. I'll see you next time. Right?
I just wanted you guys to take a note on how it affects our hunting rights and subdivided property at some time in the future if we decide to sell. That was my question. I mean, we've researched it. But I would like you guys to get those answers to see how that affects us because then we can no longer own it.
I see what you did there. You got your, your point in anyway. Does she do that all the time?
She's good.
You know.
She's lazy.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak here today on this issue that hasn't already spoken? All right. Seeing none, I mean, a close citizen participation, but I do want to thank you very much for coming in. I don't, this isn't the second hug with a punch soon to come. We're honestly working on it. So thank you. Moving on. We now have the consent agenda. These are items number one, two, and three on the agenda. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, committees, and schedules. City council meeting, January 4th, 2022. Board of adjustments meeting, January 6th, 2022. Planning and zoning meeting, January 10th, 2022. Finally, city council, January 18th, 2022. Moving on to item, old business and tabled items. Item number four on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-74 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, amending Title VIII fees, Chapter 805 fee schedule.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff was here and presented on this item last time, so hopefully we've had a chance to meet with them if there's any questions. Are there any updates?
Terrence, I believe you have a memo regarding, we're adding back in the internal architectural review.
I'm sorry. I, I threw you off on that one. I just started asking you questions.
Yes, Terrence, you should have a memo before you, but we are adding back in on the architectural review for commercial plans. We're going to do the, either third-party review or internal review at fifty dollars an hour.
So this memo was as a reaction to our wanting to go either or?
Yes.
Excellent. I do see that there is recommended language. So I would entertain, do we have any discussion about this? Amendment or bill as amended? So I would entertain a motion to amend Bill 2174 by adding architectural review fee that requires direct reimbursement of consultant for third-party architectural review and a fifty dollar an hour fee for internal architectural plan reviews, which is, internal reviews may be offered subject to availability and to make the water impact section list a fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for five-eighths or three-quarter inch lines to make the sewer impact section list fees of eight-hundred-and-fifty for five-eighth or three-quarter inch lines and two thousand for one-inch lines and five thousand for two-inch lines. I'd entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill is amended, so now I would entertain a motion and a second for a roll call vote for final passage of Bill 21-74.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We will go to a roll call vote on our computers. Please click refresh, submit your vote, hit submit vote, and then wait. Ordinance passes eight to zero. Moving on to item number five on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-75 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, approving the annexation of approximately two acres located on South Farm Road 101 between East US Highway 60 and West Republic Road, an adjacent right-of-way.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I now would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 21-75.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance carries eight to zero. Moving on to item number six on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-76 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, approving the annexation of approximately 10.20 acres located at 7294 West Farm Road 144, an adjacent right-of-way.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 21-76.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Roll call vote. We are really quiet tonight.
I'm telling you. Oh, give me time. I'm at the end of the agenda. I give.
Do, do you have a plan?
I'm gonna sing along.
Is there a dance?
No.
Dang it.
Yes, there is. Jen Mitchell.
Interpretive dance? Excellent. Keep on moving.
All right, sorry. All right, sorry. Uh, wait, did it, did it pass?
Yes, sorry.
Yes. It passed, folks. Come on.
Interpretive dance.
All right. All right. Motion passes. Let's see. I think that was 2176, so let's move on to item number seven on the agenda. This is the employee handbook. Oh, yeah. All right, here we go. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-77 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got lots of motions, lots of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, amending the employee handbook.
Is that it?
That was it.
All right.
It's great.
Lisa, do you want to talk about this? Is there anything you want to update us on? Any concerns, any questions, anything? Are we good?
I have not been approached with any questions or concerns, Miss Kamau.
Thank you, ma'am. She told me to settle down right there. All right. Counsel, any questions or discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 21-77.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Proceed to a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we talk, I, I guess I'm just confused when, as a counsel, when we can talk about the issue that's going on? And I'd love to hear from Harks because I'm confused about their concern with this path. I just don't know if now's the good time or at the end, but I would love to be able to talk to everyone without them here. You know, just to.
Oh, the, the trail?
The trail. Yeah.
Mr. Cameron.
So at the end of every meeting, what we do is typically, we don't address questions while, while they're there. What we'll do is during your open hearing, if you want to address a question, it's unfortunate that they leave, but we try not to, because we don't know what the question may be or whether we're prepared to answer. Like there's a statement I want to make about the building, just to reference, to answer the question that was mentioned. So in your open comments at the end of the meeting, when we say, is there any comments from council? That's usually where we would take it because if there's something we need to look at as a staff, we would take that information and go with it after the meeting. But trying to engage and answer a bunch of questions we're not prepared to do on the fly, sometimes it's just like it turns into a very lengthy conversation. So try to be respectful of the comments that are made. And at the end, we'll try to address whatever they, those questions would be. But even in my own report and even with, when the mayor says, are there any comments from council or for himself? Because he could probably provide an update of what he's discussed. Yeah.
Which I was planning on doing, so.
Thank you.
Great question.
Great question.
Yeah. Uh, we are on item number seven, the employee handbook. Sorry. It passed. It passed. Yeah, it passed. Eight to zero. We're good. We, we have amended our employee handbook. Moving on to item number eight, new business. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-78 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 14.04 acres from Plan Development District, PDD, to General Commercial, C2, located at the 600 block of West Civic Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Taber.
Good evening. I'm Chris Taber, principal planner. The Wilmouth Oil Company, LLC, has applied to change the zoning classification of approximately 14.04 acres of property from Plan Development District, PDD, Frisco Square, to General Commercial, C2. As part of a PDD, the property currently allows for a mix of uses, including high-density, single-family residential, R1H, multifamily, R3, local commercial, C1, and agricultural, AG. The subject property is surrounded by the Frisco Square Plan Development District to the northeast across Illinois Avenue, General Commercial, C2, to the northwest, and medium-density, single-family residential, R1M, to the south. The single-family properties consist of twelve lots in Lakeside Estates, first and second additions. The parcel has access to both water and sewer. Both systems have capacity to serve the use. The parcel, when developed, is expected to access Illinois Avenue. Staff considers the proposed zoning map amendment rezoning to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, consistent with the trend of development in the vicinity of the site, compatible with surrounding land uses, and able to be adequately served by municipal facilities. Based upon this analysis, staff recommends the approval of the application.
Thank you, sir. Do we have questions or comments from council?
Did anyone from the public come to speak? I know that backs up against a, a number of homes.
We did have some people come and speak to us.
And the general consensus?
The general concern has to do with not the rezone itself, but what develops upon the rezone. So the concerns, at the, at the, at the last hearing, or at the public hearing, mostly came upon lighting. You know, there's a concern that lighting or traffic increase or noise from whatever use comes there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right. Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-79 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
That makes me feel more confident. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, approving and amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 0.46 acres from medium-density, single-family, R1M, to heavy manufacturing, M2, located at the 1200 block of South State Highway MM.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Taber.
Hello again. You may remember, I'm going to cover a brief topic before I, we go over these next three rezones in a row. They're all kind of related. I don't know if you guys remember, in the, it's been about three months, we had a rezone where we rezoned this. If you look at the, the map up there, we rezoned that manufacturing, the M2, the dark blue, at the intersection of MM and 144. That large parcel, which is actually two parcels, was the rezone. At the time, there were five residential tracks that were not part of this rezone that were kind of encompassed by the rezone. Three of these. Three of these tracts have since been purchased, the ones being circled by the cursor, and the rezones tonight are to rezone those three tracts, one each per rezone, to later incorporate them into the larger industrial subdivision. So, the first one is for the southernmost of those three parcels. Monette Apartments has applied for rezone of point four six acres from medium-density single-family residential, R-one M, to heavy manufacturing, M-two. The property is currently vacant. This rezone is related to a previous rezone of the surrounding M-two property. The property owner intends to combine the subject parcel with the larger surrounding one for a future subdivision. The discussion points relating to development requirements concerning the subject parcel assume that it will be combined with the larger surrounding parcel, which is intended as an industrial subdivision. Development will require looping of the water and the construction of a lift station by the developer to serve the property. Both water and wastewater mains require extension to the site. A traffic impact study was required during the rezone of the larger parcel and include design of a new public road accessing the property, and have intersection, and will have an intersection with State Highway, M-M, and separately, an intersection with Farm Road, one four four. The traffic impact study results required the developer to provide the following road improvements. At the intersection of the new public road and State Highway, M-M, a designated northbound left and southbound right turn lane, and eastbound left and right turning movements to be separated into individual lanes. At the intersection of the new public road and Farm Road, one forty-four, a designated northbound turn lane. Staff considers the proposed zoning amendment rezoning to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, consistent with the trend of development in the vicinity of the site, compatible with surrounding land uses, and able to be adequately served by municipal facilities. Based upon this analysis, staff recommends the approval of this application.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion from council?
On the, with the changes to the road, who's responsible for the, how do you typically work with the cost of that?
In this case, because of the future improvements to M-M, it is possible that these construction improvements that will, that would, were we to require the developer put them in immediately, would just be removed upon improvement, may be deferred until the M-improvements are made. That is not unheard of for us to do. We don't, we don't want to see somebody invest money into something to be ripped up by a future project, especially one that we know is coming.
Makes sense, thanks. Other questions or discussion? Mr. Mayor? Sir? Oh, go ahead Jim.
Well, this question, so if I understand it right, that whether it's done now or later, it's still a cost, the developer has to pay that fee to redo the road, not M-M, but the other road. You're talking about the...
The turn, my understanding is that the turn lanes are at the cost of the developer.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood it right. Thank you.
But on, but on M-M, what he's suggesting is, they may just have to wait, but you're talking about Farm Road, one forty-four?
No, I'm talking about the improvements on M-M at the intersection.
Oh, okay, sorry, yep. The developer bears the cost.
Are these the families that came in and spoke against it? I think it was Betty, it's a Betty, and...
I believe...
Are those the homes?
It's not, there are two homes to the south, one of those homes...
Yes.
I believe two of those people came in and spoke.
Yes, yeah.
I'm not sure that any of the homeowners were these three, but since then, one homeowner is still a resident there, and one home has been sold over, so this does not remedy necessarily the people who came in and spoke. However, these parcels also, this rezone, you know, do not, does not affect, is not adjacent to those other parcels either.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Just one question, sir. Chris, are all these rezones with the same recommendation, the same details of what you just outlined, so is there any deviation on the other agenda items to that?
The only deviation would be that the other two properties currently have houses on them, and the size of the property, the acreage.
Okay. I just don't want to make you have to go through and read all that again.
I appreciate that.
Alright, if there are no other questions or discussion, please remember this is a first read, get with staff prior to the next meeting. If you have any questions or thoughts, moving on to item number ten on our agenda, I imagine this is going to sound familiar, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-one dash eighty by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero, madam clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving and amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately zero point six nine acres from medium-density single-family, R-one M, to heavy manufacturing, M-two, located at twelve forty-nine, South State Highway, M-M.
Mr. Tabor, please proceed in the best way you feel necessary to educate us.
Would the preference be to just read the differences in these, then?
That'd be great.
The Monette Apartments has applied for a rezone of point six nine acres from medium-density single-family residential, R-one M, to heavy manufacturing, M-two. The property is currently occupied by a single home. The rezone is related to a previous rezone of the surrounding M-two property, and the property owner intends to combine the subject parcel with the larger surrounding one for a future subdivision.
Do we have any questions from council as to this issue?
This could be a dumb question, it's the homeowner who's rezoning? Who lives there currently?
My understanding is that the property owner, the properties have been bought by the same owner as the industrial subdivision, but that there is some agreement for some period of time to allow existing homeowners to reside in the property, but as the property develops, those houses will come down, and it will be part of the industrial subdivision.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Alright, seeing none, please remember this is a first read, get with staff prior to the next meeting. Item number eleven, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-one dash eighty-one by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero, madam clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving and amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately one point two two acres from medium-density single-family, R-one M, to heavy manufacturing, M-two, located at twelve thirty-five, South State Highway, M-M.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Tabor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Monette Apartments has applied for a rezone of one point two two acres from medium-density single-family residential, R-one M, to heavy manufacturing, M-two. The property is currently occupied by a single home. This rezone is related to a previous rezone of the surrounding M-two property, the property owner intends to combine the subject parcel with the larger surrounding one for a future subdivision. Staff recommends approval of this.
Thank you. Questions, discussion, comments from council? Seeing none, I will say it again, please remember this is a first read, get with staff prior to the next meeting, if you have questions. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions, this is item number twelve on our agenda. Twenty-one dash R dash sixty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving a list of qualified architectural firms for as-needed use in 2022. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-one dash R dash sixty-two.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll take it.
You'll take it?
I'll take it.
You're not, you're not the name on my list here.
I got it.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, we do this with engineering consultants as well, so what we do is we submit, request for qualifications for architectural firms to submit, what we do is it gives the staff an option to utilize different architectural firms, Jared's going to be working on some projects, when it comes to the parks, we have a lot of architectural facilities we talked about with the buildings we use, so we actually look out for different architectural firms. By having this submitted tonight and approved, it allows the council to approve it, then the staff, what they would do is they would take one of those selected, pick one of the firms that have been selected tonight, they would score them and rate them as per statute of how you select professional services, and they'd make a recommendation. So instead of each time we have a project soliciting an RFQ, asking for an architectural firm, this gives us the ability just to select one that's already on the list that you've already reviewed, so much more time efficient for staff, and a lot easier for those businesses that are putting together these packets, because they're not free just to put together, so every time we do a development, they gotta submit an SOQ, we have just one on file for, what is it, one year or two years? That's the part I don't know.
No, it should be for two years.
It's two years, so, we're recommending approval, because this is something that's very helpful for both engineering and architectural services.
And I'm sorry if I'm asking a question you don't have the answer to.
I might.
Alright.
I do want to clarify, it is just for projects throughout 2022, so it would just be for the next calendar year.
How do you pick people to put on this list?
Actually, people are responding to an RFQ, and then all qualified candidates are then placed on the list.
So they, they get to ask if, like, we say, "Hey, are you interested?", and then they come back and say, "We're interested", and then they get put on the list.
Correct.
And we publish it as well, right?
Yes.
Questions or comments from council on this issue? Alright, seeing none, as this is a resolution, we can move it immediately to a vote, which is what I'd like to do. All those in favor of passing resolution twenty-one dash R dash sixty-two?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much, we will move along to reports from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so real quickly, and I know that the individuals left for the meeting, appreciate their, talking about the trail tonight, the one point that was made about our, how we handle the buildings or the facilities, especially speaking specifically to our builds facility, we're doing it, as you, as you will recall, a construction manager at risk, so basically, the architect basically, or the contractor designs the building for us with their architect and build it, so it's not a building that does not have architectural plans, we've ordered to steal for that building, so I just wanted to clarify that point, that it may not be on the architectural plans on our, our site, because they're being managed to a construction manager at risk, because they build it, they have the plans, and they provide the building to us for a set price, so we don't have an overrun on the project. So, I would just clarify that, that we don't, but there are times on development projects that we issue grading permits where the architectural plans are not finished, so that a development can move forward without having finished plans, that's one of the things that makes us so quick to move, specifically like the Amazon project, is we issue grading permits far before we actually have all the approvals done, because really, the risk is on them to get the approvals completed, so we kind of know what the project is before we start, but I just wanted to kind of clarify that for those, those folks, that yes, we do consider the architectural plans and engineering in advance, we give the time for the engineer and architects to complete it, they can start turning dirt before that's done, but that's not the case on our facility there. Garrett Brickner's not here tonight, which is, he's normally in this room, but Garrett Brickner, what do they call it, Engineering and Training, EIT, is that what they're called? So Garrett, EIT, so Garrett has been with us, I believe he was at MoDOT for a while, but he came to work for us four years now? He's been in EIT, well, I'm proud to announce that he has passed his PE. So that gives us actually two full-time PEs on staff that are actually on the civil side that we never had before, and so I think that's a huge win for the community, but I'm really proud of this young man. He's grown a lot, he's learned a lot, but for him to take that test, you can see the stress on people's faces, you know, those of us that had to take a test to get through a license and certification, you know, you're waiting in the mail, and you know, he's worked very hard, he's very determined, he's very passionate about his job, I just appreciate the work that he does, and he's trying to do it, so congratulations.
For your mom at home, what's the PE?
Oh, professional engineer mama. Yes, I can thank the mayor for that clarification. So yes, he is a professional engineer in the state of Missouri, and I think that he's worked very hard, and if you've been around Garrett all and watched his work, he's very passionate, he has his convictions about what he does, and so I love that passion about him, and just very blessed to have him on our team, so congratulations to him. Jennifer and Jared, I'm always going to congratulate you, great job on you and the chamber, and everybody associated with the Main Street light-up, unfortunately conflicted with some other family issues I had, but at the same time, I've heard it was just an incredible event, but I appreciate that you all have taken the connection pillar of the trust edge to a whole new level, and bringing out and connecting the resources with the reindeer run, from where you guys are at today and where that went to this weekend, it was a phenomenal, just the feedback has been phenomenal, the pictures were phenomenal, the chamber was heavily involved, Macy was involved, in just pulling that together, the energy that's in this community right now, that's not just related to the growth and development, but a sense of community is extraordinary, so I just want to thank you guys for your continued vision and work and connection to build those, Pumpkin Days, again, the hundred and fifty year celebration, really was just a connection of you bringing that to the park, I know people didn't want to necessarily move it, but just to see what that turned into, the booths, the vendors, and what you're doing and your programming, that's bringing the community together, that we're getting bigger, just not different. That's kind of been our vision, bigger, not different, and I just want to thank you guys for that. I want to thank everyone for an outstanding twenty-one. It's been an incredible year, I think when you sit back and you look at what we did, our number one priority in the organization for 2021 was public safety, and that was, that was the objective of what we did, we purchased land, we've done a lot of things, we've improved processes, it's probably been one of the largest years this city's ever seen when it comes to just overall turnaround and growth. So that comes with a lot of challenges, and so we're prepared for those challenges, looking forward to it for 2022. I don't, I think when people look at it, there's kind of a slowdown in some, certain areas, but that's what the fourth quarter is usually for. I hope everybody rests up and has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I just, I cannot thank the staff for the work they do, for the community that comes out that supports us, for this council, and for the mayor, for the work that you all do. Last thing, I just want to say, congratulations Jen, that you didn't kill Macy for posting your picture. So, I commend you, but hey, I love that, so, yeah, tell Macy he's lucky to be alive. But again, I wish you all Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and that's all I have.
Excellent.
See you next year.
You'll see me before.
Yeah.
Comments from council? We'll start then, Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, definitely echo a lot of what David had said, this is, in my mind, 2021, record-breaking year, the best year we've ever had here in Republic, and definitely the best 2021 we've ever had. I would just like to thank everybody, you know, from David, city staff, council, the mayor, you know, everyone that volunteers to come here, all of our planning and zoning, there's so many different people in this community that make it such a great place. I was at the Saturday event with the, the lighting and the parade, the Christmas parade, and that was, that was very intense and very exciting to look both ways down that road and see how large of a crowd gathered for that, very impressive, thankful for everything that the city does for us and all of the hard work, but I would like to echo the Merry Christmas and Happy New Years to everyone, and we'll see you next year.
Excellent.
Alright, can we have a discussion? Because I'm, I'm new to this, we didn't have a lot of development in Boatsdale, South Dakota, so, I'm just trying to figure out, just listening to them and the parks, I know we've talked about it, but I guess I was a little unaware of how the trail would go, and that it would cut through property, so I get their frustration, but I would, I would just love to have a discussion about it, because I still feel a little like outside of what is happening and what their rights are, do they have, I mean, I know they're frustrated, but what are we going to do about it?
So, I'd probably rather Andrew answer the question, but what we do is, we've submitted for a grant, we, we brought that before this council, received the grant to build the trail, Green County and part of their in-kind, so Green County's not financially partnering on the job financially, but they're the ones, because they're in the county, that are securing the right of way on our behalf, so we, the city, are not going out ourselves to procure easement, there is an easement agent on behalf of the county that's doing that work for us as part of their in-kind match, so that we didn't have to pay to do that work with our staff. So normally, you would pay an engineering firm, or someone to go door-to-door, work with those residents to do that. So, part of that grant application requires there to be a public meeting where they can come out and see the plans, but the project has already been commissioned, it's pretty much been set up that this is the project, this is kind of in ballpark where we're going to go, but you have to have public meetings to say, "Hey", and take public comment, and then go back and reevaluate the public comment to say, "Could we shift the trail, could we move it?", which I know they've already done, so what I don't have is that, necessarily that update today, but I know that based upon the feedback and comments, some of that, part of that trail's already moved to the other side of the road. but I know that based upon the feedback and comments, some of that, part of that trail's already moved to the other side of the road. So like, I already know that the trail has somewhat shifted based upon comment, but like the comment regarding it going out in the back of the properties like four or five years ago, that wasn't, that's, it's been much longer than that. I do believe the original trail had some meandering that cut right in the middle of open fields and would have been like out in the middle of pastures. Like, okay, that seems awful strange, but, so realigning it that aligned with the road was the objective. And then in going down to the overall master trail plan that is established through the region. So there is a regional trail plan that's been adopted. So basically following that, it's not just like, hey, we got a good idea, let's run out to the battlefield. It's part of an overall transportation system, just like our highways are. So we have an overall transportation system plan that runs right through the middle of property two. So it's like, we have that all over the, the area because that's how you have to develop when you're developing a subdivision or anything else. Where does the future road need to be? So if you establish where that is, you can tell a property owner, hey, there's a plan for a road or a trail going through your property in the future. That's why we do a comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan kind of identifies where these things are going to take place. It's kind of like these, these rezones we just did tonight. It's in a manufacturing area. There just happens to be houses there, but once the city decided to move all that area to manufacturing, that's the future of that highway. So it's kind of like, we've established that through the planning process to do it. So when we brought to the grant, it was a one-time opportunity, so they said we had funding that we had shelved. That's not accurate. And it's not because they wouldn't know, they're, they're trying to be, it's, they wouldn't know that there was a special funding opportunity that came available three years ago, and we actually have an approved trail plan from that, that park all the way to the battlefield that's been established. So whether the route goes here or there, it's still in the general vicinity of where that master trail plan goes. And that is the future of what the trail plan, other than if it got adjusted or modified at a regional level. It's kind of like something that's, the OTO organization, Ozark Transportation Organization, they all pull together to create these master plans. So they are subject to public record. They are subject to public hearing, and people can comment on the master trail plans. Whether they see them all the time, that's probably the hardest part, is like, we didn't know about this. We didn't see it. But that one resident is indicating, we knew about the trail for a long time. It's just now going, instead of behind our property, it's going through the middle or through the front. So it's not a project that hasn't been discussed, but it's one that got shelved because there was no funding. And now that there is funding, uh, that's why we presented to the council for, for moving it forward.
Can I follow up on this a little bit?
Yeah.
So I've, I've met with Andrew twice now about this. Nothing's happening tomorrow. Nothing's happening next week. This is, if the trail goes through there, we're looking at 2023. So we've got some time. So everybody relax. I'm trying to figure out who has the rights to do what, just like David explained. But the trail's still moving. The path of it's still moving. So these people that were in here tonight may not be affected at all. We just simply don't know exactly which side of the road, where it's going to go. They're still working on that. So it's back at the engineering firm right now. So I'm going to discuss some further things whenever we get our full-time city attorney, and we'll go from there. And I've been communicating all that with Michael, and he knows that and understands it. I think he just wants to make sure we're all paying attention, and I appreciate that. It, it's a big deal.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that too. I'm, I'm new to this, like I said, so I like to know. And, and I get their frustration, and I want to make sure that we take it serious and that we're listening. Um-
I'm not going to punch them next week. That's like really not going to happen.
Yeah.
Uh, we just need to figure out everything.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, uh, I've heard the amount of land to be taken all the way from 20 to 60 foot, which is, what, how much land are they talking about taking?
Well, you got to remember, okay, so you don't have to remember. You, you may not know this. They go off the center line of the street. So you're not necessarily taking 60 foot. You take the center line of the street and consider what it is in the overall width of it. So you're not really taking 60 feet. It's actually taking into consider what that is. So if you got a, I don't think they're 17-foot lanes by any stretch of the imagination. They're probably what, 12?
From the center line?
So you got 12 feet from the center line, so you're probably talking about another 48 feet. And that's it. That is not even already easement already or right of way adjacent to the road in addition. So you're only talking 48 feet or 12, 48 feet from the edge of the road, but there might also be an additional 10-foot of right of way on the other side of that road too. So you're probably looking at, I'm just, now I'm doing math in my head, which is not good.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight more feet. So technically it'd be 40 feet. Thank you.
I'm always here for you.
Out there in Boston, it's 25 foot from the center line to the edge of my property. So there's 25 foot, then you'd go an additional-
Thirty-five.
Thirteen foot, yeah, 10 more foot. So actually, they're just getting 10 foot taken from their property.
And I, I believe it's back at the engineers right now, looking at where it needs to be laid out, is, is what my understanding is. So I, I don't even know if it's going to be on their property. I, we just don't know yet.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can, that's a good point because I, I know of at least three properties, uh, and I don't want to say, I guess I could. I actually believe the one gentleman, uh, that's speaking, I think, Miss, um, I believe it's actually moved from that one side. So there's three properties that's now moved across.
Left or the right when you're driving towards ZZ?
Again, I have not, I would have to look at the, the layout of it. I know it's modified, but that's, that's the intent. That's the exact purpose of why you have a public meeting. I think that it's like, this is a done deal. This is where it's going to go. I think the project in itself of applying for the funding was not whether we lose it and it goes to NICS. And I apologize if that's what, that, that message would go out there, but at the same time is it's like, we stood up and said, we can do this project. We actually have the trail. It's in the master plan. How that aligns and whether it meandered behind someone's house, that's the discussion. So when you lay it out there and you, you're drawing this feedback, you're actually looking for. So the process is actually working that you're allowed to come speak, and the message probably was, we didn't hear you. And so I think the time to listen to what that is and make those changes, I think that's exactly what, uh, Andrew and his team are working on with the engineers to do that. And I don't think it was like, hey, here it is. Take it or leave it. Too bad it's in your yard. I think it's a, hey, we want to hear your feedback. And I've been doing property acquisition for as long as I can remember, and there's always a way that you negotiate or work with, hey, we might have to replace a tree. Hey, we'll work with you to move a fence or we'll build a fence. There's ways that you negotiate getting easement, just saying, hey, tough. That's not who we are. And so I think that listening to them, maybe perceived as, as not listening to them, but I think that that was the whole purpose of the meeting, was to get them there so that we could say, hey, let us have it. Let us, let us hear it because we, we, I guarantee you, Andrew's done enough projects as myself. You know that there's not going to be some of those situations where a lot of people are going to show up and tell you how proud they are of the project. We've just done another streets and, and, and things and those, and you do, you, you have to understand it and listen to it. And then you're like, there's times like, you know, we can move that. And so I think that's just part of the process we're taking. It's just a little bit foreign or different at this level because we've been, like, Andrew and I have talked, we've been here for five and a half years, and this is probably the first time in these, these locations, but we've dealt with them countless times in other situations. It's just not, it's not common here at this board or this council. And so it's a little bit like, they're going through the steps to listen to it and present it. And I think what you're seeing is something that's going to become more prevalent in the future because we continue to grow. There's going to be more highways and more things that take place. Uh, fortunately for us, on MM, we've got all the right of way and the property owners that we're working with. Well, I don't guess we had all the right of way, but we've got most of it that you're still not going to see that much of it on that highway. But hopefully we don't have to do with it all the time, but we are a growing community, and roads and Bailey Street's going to have to go through, and so a lot going on. But we try to listen.
It, I, I believe we're listening and it's, we're, we're doing what we can. So.
Could you clarify? I know you touched on the grants. Where's the grant coming from? I know we-
Federal highway, I believe it's a federal highway, a federal grant that's administered through, uh, the OTO, the Ozark Transportation Organization, which is, that's how they move money through. And there was, um, I think there were three projects that were, that were carried into that. One in Ozark, one in Republic, and maybe one, I think they're both, um, in Ozark, Finnish Finley Farms. I could be off on that, but it came from federal. So when you're handling federal funds, you have to follow a procurement model, which requires, requires public hearing that allows for them to have comment at those public hearings, which is what we were doing.
Is there going to be a second public hearing on that?
I believe they have to reveal, they'll, they'll unveil what the findings and the changes, so they'll roll out what the change or alterations were to the plan. I mean, considering the feedback that we received, you know, those that know Andrew and his staff, they're, they're going to accommodate and roll it out and say, this is the project that, that, that we're doing and, uh, or not doing, and they'll say, this is, these are the changes that we've modified. Uh, there's some questions about trees that I talked to Andrew about today, that the, the resident on the corner, I believe, talked about the trees in the property. Unlike the mayor, it's like, hey, we're in a season where you've got transition in, the holiday, finding an answer right now. Um, it'll be after the first of the year to get any definitive answers or, or ideas or solutions to find, uh, alternatives.
Any other questions about this issue? Important issue?
No, great questions, comments.
Okay. Then I believe Ms. Poole has an announcement.
We need Laura to come up here.
Come on up, Laura. Step to the mic. Well, would, would you like us to make you a police officer? We can do that. Okay, just checking.
Positions filled.
Now, on behalf of the whole council-
And the mayor.
And the mayor, we would like to present our dedicated city clerk with a small token.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
We appreciate you.
Is there any other council members that would like to make a statement or discuss anything? Yes, sir.
I would just like to echo what, um, a lot of other folks have already said here tonight. The, uh, the, the Christmas parade and everything that went on around it was just, it was, it was spectacular. It was amazing. I, I went there expecting to see what I saw the first hour, which was a handful of people here and there, and, and within just a couple of hours, it was, uh, it, it rivaled, if not exceeded, any pumpkin days I've ever been at. It, it was, it was an amazing turnout for, for year one. I can't wait to see what happens next year. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, then, as mayor, I'm going to wrap things up. Um, I have been in a lot of conversations with the trails people. I know that it's very important to them. I want them to know that we're taking this seriously. I appreciate you letting me be the point person on that. Uh, there's still a lot of questions, and we're all working towards answers, and I know the city is taking that very seriously as well. So I appreciate them being here. They're welcome to come back. I'll, I'll give them their three minutes every time. So, um, I would also like to thank my friend Damon Phillips. I believe this is his last meeting here at city council, and Damon stepped in to the breach when we needed a city attorney. He, without hesitation, jumped in. It was a single phone call, and I said, I need your help, and Damon said, I'm there. And I really appreciate his professionalism and more importantly, his friendship. So thank you for being here, Damon.
My pleasure.
You're welcome. Uh, finally, I'd like to say Merry Christmas, have a Happy New Year. Buckle in. It's going to get busier. I don't know how that's possible, but that's what I've been told, so I'm buckled into. So with that-